Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, call it please order. We have a round. Please. They have one day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the Constitution, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all. All right, uh, sign up to speak tonight.
I don't know Rose is gonna speak today.
I'm wanting to introduce her.
Oh, it's a dual.
Introduce yourself ladies.
I'm Rose Lethaby, I'm an assessor for Hampshire Township. I think everybody probably knows me. And I want to introduce my daughter Rebecca Fanpatty, because she's running for my job.
Yeah.
Because Rose is finally retiring.
So not, no way.
She was getting busy somehow. So like I said, my name is Rebecca Fanpatty, I'm ready for Hampshire Township assessor. I earned my certified Illinois assessing official designation October two thousand sixteen. Um, in order to keep that up, I've been taking some new education classes. Born and raised in Hampshire, seen it over, go through a lot of changes. Um, I do have a bachelor's of science in business administration and management degree from University of Phoenix. Um, I've been employed at Interlag out in Gastro Round Twenty for fifteen years now. Um, I would be honored to become the next Hampshire Township assessor. I, um, know, working with the assessor for seven years, mostly part-time helping with reassessments. I know the work that's involved and the commitment that is needed. And I, um, we work really hard just to make sure that all of the assessments are fair, accurate, and uniform. And I would, uh, make that my full-time position, um, my sole employment, so I could be there for the property owners to help guide them through the assessment process and help them with any assessments. And if I were to get elected, I promise to serve with honesty and integrity. Do you have any questions for me?
Well.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you so much for your time.
You got it.
All right.
All right, anyone else sign up?
That's it for this evening.
That was it? All right. Uh, it should have the, uh, meeting minutes out of twenty-four until twenty-one. Review those, any changes?
These are the same part.
Maybe you can get a pair of glasses.
I mean, denial. I'm certainly not old enough or dual yet.
I've been wearing this since I was little. Seriously. I'm in the depressing Bible.
I'm not.
Try.
I'm gonna try.
Try. I couldn't read the numbers on the dashboard.
And I'm a little disappointed that the minutes didn't do my amazing backdrop from that.
Oh, yeah. Backdrop. All right, any changes? Uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Questions or comments, roll call, ladies?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Klein. Hi. Mr. Coles.
Present.
Mr. K- Mr. Kechy.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Fine.
And zero one.
Zero.
You got okay.
Present.
We kissed the bed.
Present.
Yeah, all right, Mr. Hedges.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you have before you a proclamation of the National Engineers Week for the week of February twenty-one through twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one.
Yes, hopefully everybody has a copy of the, uh, fine resolution or proclamation that will proclaim the week of February twenty-first through twenty-seventh as the National Engineers Week in the Village of Hampshire. Look. So I'll just take a little bit of this, whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge. And where we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the twenty-first century, so. Good luck to all you engineers out there for, uh, starting next month. Uh, if you turn something, start. Twenty-first.
We don't, we don't need luck, we use science, we're good.
Train engineers too?
What?
No. I asked that question as well.
Oh. What's that?
I was wanting to include all engineers, like train engineers. Operating.
Perfect.
All right, Mr. Hedges.
All right. That's your consideration of a resolution approving a certificate of vacation pertaining to the final plat of subdivision for Hampshire Woods Business Park. Uh, this has been, um, is being recommended by the Plan Commission. And, uh, we have Mike Azola here to represent the application. This is, uh, this would allow for access on the gas road, uh, for a new project, um, called Freight, um, Union, Union, thank you, which led to a twenty thousand square foot building, about fifteen thousand square feet of, uh, of, um, service space and five thousand square feet of office that will be their corporate headquarters. And I'll let, uh, Mike add any additional comments that he would like to. Uh, this would allow for access on the gas road from their property. And I believe you have a new packet of recommendation from the, uh, Plan Commission.
I guess if there's any question, I don't really have any other comments, it's pretty straightforward. This is an operational consideration for this company and, uh, so again, it's a pretty straightforward, I did provide a, a bit of a traffic analysis for EEI. Had to work together with them on how they hold the whole site low, uh, safely. And, uh, but the only thing we added from the Plan Commission was we had agreed initial allowance and signage restricting truck traffic to the south. And we've added, uh, I think it was a good idea because the people and the kids coming through from the high school perhaps, a sign going, let's call it north, that would just alert people that there's trucks entering. So we'll work with the township on, on that signage. Thought that was a good idea.
Mike, could you add why this is important to the property owner?
This is, this guy, this is a bill to sue for Freight Union. Because of the nature of their business, they're an over-the-road trucking company. And the flow of this site is such where this made this site a whole lot more efficient for trucks to come in off of mainly Flanagan. And then really out onto Gas left-hand, left turn only. Without it, then you've got the possibility, you get a trucker missed that Flanagan Road, turned, and then where's he gonna go? Uh, on top of it, again, it's a site consideration, they will have in any given day up to maybe ten movements. The ninety percent of their trucks are on the road all the time. This facility is their corporate headquarters and they're, they'll have some maintenance phase and they'll have a bit of storage for some of their parts. So it's not a parking lot, although they will park there. It's really meant for trucks that are coming in for maintenance or some drivers that might be off for a few days that will park a truck and then hit the road again. Again, this allows us to flow through this site just a lot more effectively and a little more safely, you know, having these access points.
Any questions or comments?
I just, um, one, one question exposed. Just because I'm, I'm struggling with trying to look at this now. So this, this Flanagan Road, right? Was it, yeah, Flanagan and Gas, right? And then this goes off to the distances, it off into the, it shows right now it's a cul-de-sac on Google map.
It is.
Is, we're not completing this road at this time, that, that's gonna remain.
No, not right there, there's lots of weight right there.
Right, yeah, okay, so we're not doing anything with planning, we're just adding access to.
Access to gas and stuff under that property.
That's what I was, that's what I was curious about, because it doesn't show the cul-de-sac, huh?
Then someday will, once, uh, thinking road is reconstructed.
That's what I thought.
T in the twenty.
Okay, that'll be constructed at that point.
I'm good. Okay. Kind of the tanks.
Right at the corner of Flanagan and Gas.
Yeah, slot nine, it's right.
A lot.
Nine, yeah, yeah. Out of the south. South west corner. Right next to the pond.
Any questions, guys?
Seems like a no-brainer to me, so.
You know, what originally was there no burn off of on gas, what was the original reason for that?
Uh.
That was a long time ago.
I did it.
I did it.
Oh, he did.
And I, I did, um, this is back in two thousand three and because, uh, when we did the original part, uh, gas road only went to the end of that lot. And so we never contemplated any access needed off of gas at that point because it didn't go anywhere. And fast forward all these years with this use again, now we realize that again, going left out only and right in only was really needed for this site. So the note was just added that there, it wasn't, there was no science to it, it was just as we were plating this, we said, you can't go any further south because it's not trucking. So we put a note on there with the village at the time that just restricted it.
Mr. Kechy, Mr. Robinson, any questions?
None for me.
Nope, I'm good.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash oh-two. A resolution approving a cer- certification or certificate of vacation pertaining to the final plat of subdivision for Hampshire Woods Business Park.
So moved.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Ms. Klein. Hi. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Kechy.
Hi.
Motion passed six zero.
Mayor, we would ask your consideration for a motion setting the date for public hearing, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one at seven P M. At Village Hall and the proposed annexation agreement and amendment to the prior annexation agreement relating to Old Town Subdivision in the village. Uh, just briefly to let you know that, uh, we, I've had a draft, uh, uh, Mr. Schuster and I have been reviewing a draft development agreement, amendment to the development agreement from Crown for about ten days now. And, uh, we do expect to have that, um, completed and available to you prior to, at least prior to the public hearing date that we're requesting tonight. Uh, conversations are going very well with Crown. And, uh, we've also shared the information with all of the other taxing bodies in the village and they'll be having some conversation over the park district soon as a result of that. So, um, and be happy to answer any questions about the process at this point. It is scheduled for, uh, the zoning board and the Plan Commission prior to the village board meeting.
Okay. All right. Then I will entertain a motion to set the public, the date for public hearing. Oh, sorry, sorry, questions?
On, uh, the amendment as the annexation and the, the development of the property, I appreciate that we've notified the other taxing bodies that they've been included in the planning process to ensure things like the ability to turn a fire truck around is, is adequate within that facility that is concerns being that, that the park district has land that is adequate to their needs and where they would want it to be. Have they all been included in that process or was this a a recent thing that they just got notified because this isn't a month, so?
Well, I only had it for about ten days myself, so, uh, it was shared with them just this week. So they, 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 they will have a month to consider it and also to make comments directly to Crown or through us. So I'd say the answer is yes.
All right, and prior or prior to the public hearing, will we all have access to their comments and their, and the agreements and all of the documentation?
If I, if I receive any comments from them, yes, I will share that with you. Um, but you will have the agreement as you requested recently, about two weeks prior to that public hearing.
So they have to get you their comments within two weeks for us to get it two weeks before the meeting.
Well, I don't know if you want the comments two weeks before the meeting, I doubt I mean that's quite as important as.
To say that their, to say that their comments are taken into consideration of the agreement that we're looking at. They'd have to get it to you in time for you to get it to us two weeks ahead of time, correct?
If that's the way you'd like to do it, I could try and do that, yes, for that, we give them only about two weeks now, or four weeks from the beginning of the hearing. The commitment we've made is to give you the development agreement itself, but if I have any comments, then I'm sure that I, I, I should receive the comments by then. Well, they might actually seen the agreement itself, but only seen the plat so far. But that's where most of their concerns and information will come from. The development agreement itself is, still is gonna take at least a week or so to complete the negotiations. Sure.
All right, any questions? Then I will entertain a motion to set the date for public hearing as March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one at seven P M at Village Hall.
So moved.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Kechy.
Hi.
Motion passed six zero.
Mayor, we would ask your consideration of a motion authorizing the village manager to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with EEI for engineering and landscape architectural services for the street state project. You have in your packet a, uh, an agenda supplement prepared by, um, Josh Ray. Uh, Josh has been working with Freddie Schmody on this project all along and has taken Freddie's recommendations. I will just tell you briefly, I, I'll let Josh go from there and then we'll answer questions. Okay, Josh?
As stated in the agenda supplement, uh, the CDBD procurement requirements require us to, uh, seek requests for qualifications for this project. Uh, as recommended by Freddie Best Schmody, the plan was to, uh, send out requests to multiple engineering firms. Uh, we've looked at five, um, partially based on Freddie's request and partially just based on engineering firms that have contacted us previously. Uh, was to have a selection committee to review those after they were submitted by a certain deadline. The five firms, uh, out of the five firms, four of them responded. Uh, three of those responses were simple emails that said that the firm did not have the, uh, the staffing capacity or the workload capacity to take on this project this spring and summer. Uh, so EEI was the only actual submission. Uh, one of the firms just did not respond at all. Therefore, uh, since EEI would be the default highest scoring firm for the criteria I set forth in the R F U, uh, the selection committee did not meet, uh, just to save time. But their submission was very good, we, we did review it just here in Village Hall and it is excellent and meets all of the, all the criteria that we set. And Freddie Schmody has confirmed that this process, uh, will satisfy the procurement requirements, so we recommend the village board pass the motion.
I would just add to that, that if you have it in your packet, I think that the presentation was very well prepared. Uh, this was qualifications only, as you recall, not based on any price, so there's no, no, no cost has been negotiated at this point. And I just feel that EEI did a really good job of addressing the specific street scape needs of Hampshire. And, uh, they'll be subcontracting for the landscape architecture.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Kelly, stumbling through, so.
Are we, is the Home Resource Inc., the people that did the design, are they included as this, as if we approve the EEI, we are also approving them?
Uh, that will be EEI's choice, but that is their intention to contract a PRI, yes.
So that wouldn't be up to the village to choose the people that are doing it?
If you would like to do so, you could, but I don't think you really have any information before you to consider, um, except the experience that we had over the several months last summer when they were here. If you'd like to add that, I don't, I don't see that that'd be a problem, to add that to the motion.
Our good kickstart in May?
Uh, the first thing we'll do is really confirm the schedule. Um, Josh mentioned, we did leave the, the, uh, request for qualifications open for almost four weeks, so that the firms, we did have an indication that three of those firms did plan to quote, or to submit, submit also. Uh, that took a little extra time, so the first thing we'll do now that we have, once, once we have a firm selected, is we'll really firm up the schedule. And then we'll be notifying first the village board and then the businesses about when the construction will start. We're hoping to break ground early spring and still have a target date of, uh, grand opening for Sep- for Labor Day weekend. And we have already started working on rerouting trucks and, uh, detour routes for the time that the, the downtown State Street will be closed.
I know we talked about this later tonight, but we're gonna have two main parts of town completely blocked off for concurrent construction projects with traffic rerouting.
Actually, hopefully they will be subsequent, uh, because, uh, IDAT plans to start in September and finish in November.
I thought IDAT was starting in the spring.
They, they just, they're in June. Um, I'm, the bit in June that they plan to start.
So these two areas won't be closed down at the same time?
No, just.
Try to avoid that.
If everything goes on schedule, they'll literally overlap one week of Labor Day weekend. And that assumes that IDAT is on track.
So I, I read, I read that they intend to have Coon Creek this year, yes, now. We're, I mean, it's gonna impact things, I understand, this project needs moving, this project needs, we, I, I have full support of the project, we already established that, but we need to figure out some way to coexist, not only with the Coon Creek Day Festival event when that happens. And then there's the big car show that happens right around that same timeframe. And so we need to be prepared because they can't come downstate and then turn on Panama and go, or turn on Jefferson and go down to the park really long. They're gonna have to go down to Tenille or something like that and it's gonna aggravate the residents because they will start like, you know, early.
You know what? Oh, well.
No, I understand, and I'm just saying.
After he gets a, a solid schedule of, of what the street scape's gonna be, then it'll be up to Coon Creek to go through and to the castle. Will he, do either come to Jay or Josh before the board and?
Figure it out.
Right.
Figure it out.
But I, I don't think, we won't have it closed for four months, I don't see that happening. Once we do have a good schedule, we'll share that with everybody and make sure every organization, business and them knows we'll be starting to promote it. Remote parking lots, um, there's don't get a lot of usage right now except for James Motors, and I'll have to clear out for that, for that time.
That was gonna be, um, yeah. In, in the project plan, I see, like you said, Labor Day weekend is when it would open, is there any penalties being listed up for missing delivery day?
Not at this point, because frankly, uh, that's just, uh, we, they have not had the time to do any engineering, so they can actually set a specific construction schedule. That's just a guess at this point, best guess. Uh, once they've done the engineering work, which they can start on after this, after we negotiate the contract, uh, then we can get a really firm timeline. And, uh, if you'd like to, we can talk about incentives or penalties, but at this point, it's not gonna be considered right now.
Engineering is a part of the original, does it, did it do any engineering as a part of the original design and recommendations of the building?
Well, a lot of time, but the, the plan's different than it was before.
You're talking about street scape.
Yeah.
Some preliminary work force, there was actually a, we sent out requests for proposals and I believe the amount for EEI was three thousand dollars. And the amount for PRI was one thousand dollars.
Right.
So that's the work that they did in advance, just so that we can prepare the application to go to Springfield for the, for the grant program. Okay. So I say that's a preliminary work and then the drawings that you see in there are the PRI.
With the, the budgets, the timeline, none of that has been fully established, though?
Correct. What you see before you is a guideline based on the project, but there is no, no engineering work has been done, so it's really hard to be firm on a project until it's been done.
So that includes budget as well?
Correct.
And if I can jump in real quick, the budget that we had was, uh, sort of a à la carte type thing. And so a- as far as I understand, I think we're going to try to include as many of those things because we listed them in order of priority. So, uh, the, uh, the goal is to, you know, once the firm prices come in to include as much of that as possible, we can peel things off as, uh, you know, we have a certain amount of budget we have to go to, so there is flexibility in that, I think.
Well, right, but our trustee Kechy, I remember in that conversation that a large portion of that budget was infrastructure work that was being proposed by EEI. And so my concern is that they, they budgeted a large amount for infrastructure and now they're saying that they didn't do engineering work to understand what that infrastructure need was going to be. Do you see what I mean? So my feeling is infrastructure comes a lot more expensive and now that list that we have to tick off of, all of a sudden the street scape gets a lot less of what we thought it was going to be, but the infrastructure got fixed.
No, that's fair, I mean, but this reminds me of what my customers do, they have what we call estimating engineers. And those engineers basically just look at the, the total scope of a project and look at, you know, historical prices to get a feel for it. Um, they don't put in, uh, the, the hard time that it takes to really detail things out until, you know, they get a purchase order for a piece of equipment or, or a system, I imagine it's the same thing, so, uh, the work, though, that they do isn't, you know, frivolous. Uh, it's based on historical, um, you know, experience and projects that, that they have done in the past. So I think the, uh, my guess is the pricing should be good, but there is really no way around that, Aaron. I mean, you can't get to those hard numbers until someone pays you to go figure that out. Um, and typically, that, that's just how it works, and I, it is frustrating. Um, and, uh, in the case of my customers, they have to live with it if they're wrong, unfortunately, we have to live with it if EEI is wrong, but I'm not sure there's a real way around that.
Okay.
And EEI is not doing the work as far as the actual construction, we'll still be at the mercy of the people that we bid that work out to, to come in online, so hopefully we can get some multiple bids, um, on the actual work to be done. Um, and hopefully that'll help us, uh, use, you know, competitive market forces to hopefully come in lower, hopefully, that'd be nice. But you, we really won't know, I don't think.
Trustee Kelly, would you say, um, please, the CEI, um, our streets department and our utilities department, myself, who were all involved in the discussions about infra- about infrastructure and the connections to, to side streets. You know, we started from the very beginning saying, let's not do a free street scape over, over aging infrastructure, then have to dig it up for yourself. And the good thing is that EEI has a lot of knowledge, as do our public works employees, uh, superintendents about those, about that infrastructure. So I think the condition of the infrastructure is well-known. What we're at, at, uh, risk is us and materials is really the one unknown thing right now.
Right.
With, with construction booming the way it is, there's a lot of construction material costs are very high right now. Unfortunately, not cement and, and payment like we're talking about here primarily. Uh, but you get into steel and wood for, for home construction and prices are almost double what they were just six months ago. So that's probably our greatest risk would be material cost.
Any other questions or comments? Then I will entertain a motion to allow the village manager to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with EEI for the street scape engineering services.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Kechy.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Yes.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you, Mayor, we have, we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve an engagement with Lauterbach and Amen, L L P, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one audit services and tick compliance in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three sixty-five. It's not very often that you get to, uh, bring before the board within twelve months, three different, um, audit approvals, but, uh, I do wanna say that, uh, Ms. Klein's has been very, well, I don't have to tell you that she's been burning mid oil, because she's been doing that for years. She and Terry have done a great job of getting us caught up on the audits. Um, this will be the third one, as I said before, that I've asked you to approve in the last year. Uh, our twenty, twenty, uh, I really have a hard time keeping these all straight. The twenty-nineteen audit was submitted yesterday. So twenty-eighteen was submitted in October, twenty-nineteen was submitted yesterday, and our twenty-twenty audit will be submitted, uh, March thirty-first, we're on schedule for that date. And that I've shared with you before. And, uh, this is, um, I will let Lori speak to the specifics of the proposal, but it's a two-and-a-half percent increase over the prior year, which is the same increase we had before. Uh, we did consider going out for bids for this, but what, and I mentioned that at the last board meeting, but when we did, we, I realized I, I had misspoke before, it's, it's just really too late. Um, we're barely gonna get into Lauterbach's schedule as it is, and, uh, um, so I'll let Lori speak to that, those in your agenda supplement.
Um, so there are, I included the peer review report, um, that will help to, um, show you that they are doing the right things, that's, that's almost like an auditor of the auditor, if you will. So it kind of gives you assurance that, um, you know, that they are doing the right thing for their clients. So it kind of gives you assurance that, um, you know, that they are doing the right thing for their clients. And, um, as Jay said, it's, it would be really tough to, um, get proposals, um, or qualified auditors on this short of a time schedule. So, um, we're just asking that you approve this one more time and then we'll, we'll do the formal RFQs, uh, or RFPs, excuse me, um, for the next cycle.
I would add that I did speak to, um, our, our managing partner has been on the account for quite a while and she's been rotating and has brought in new staff for the current audit. So they continue to put, as she put it, uh, different eyes with different perspectives on our account. So it's not the same people looking at the project again. So we've taken all the precautions we can, uh, and it turns out that it's not customary to change auditors right now.
This is the same auditor we approved the last two times?
Yes.
Is it not customary just to go for one bid on all audits that we had to have done?
Uh, that, that we have done in the past, right? Get a three-year proposal or something like that.
There any cost savings to doing that versus doing one audit proposal like this?
Um, I, I think there may have been six months ago, frankly, it didn't occur to me at the time.
I, um.
But I, I, I can't tell you that it would have been any lower if my thinking is very fair.
Their increases have been very reasonable, um, you know, even on this once, one offs as you call them. So, um, I don't know what it would have saved any money.
Any questions or comments? Then I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve contract with Lauterbach and Amen for the fiscal year 2021 audit, amount of 27,365 dollars. And to authorize the stamp to execute the G A.
Sorry.
Any further questions or comments? We'll call, please.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Kajeki.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. Uh, the next thing, the last thing that I have on the agenda is just an update on the Route 72 intersection improvements, Route 72 and State Street. Uh, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had a meeting for about two and a half hours with E E I and IDOT. There were very three, three IDOT engineers on the phone and they were very considerate of our concerns. Um, unfortunately I did receive an email on, uh, on the 10th, February 10th last week. And I'll just read for, for your paragraph, uh, for Mr. Sullyman, Sullyman Tolgar, who's the primary, uh, engineer for the project. Uh, the district one office, he says, currently we are targeting June 11th, 2021. But in the final plans, its specifications are due to central office in a couple of weeks. I assure the village's request with my supervisor to get her opinion and approval, since it seems we do not have enough time to incorporate this additional work due to recent state above. Based on my conversation with her, unfortunately, we cannot add the village's proposed sidewalk in our project as it would delay the project's schedule. Typically, these kinds of requests are considered during the initial stages of plan development and preliminary plans, which in this case was in 2016. We recommend that the village install the additional, uh, section of proposed sidewalk via permit or have the developer include this with proposed strip law at your completion department's intersection construction. In that case, he's referring to the uh, Joe Zarski. But the discussion was exclusively around the site, the portion of the sidewalk, uh, gone in front of chicken. Uh, and during the discussion, he was extremely concerned that apparently they only do these lettings once a year. And, uh, if they were to delay the project, we missed the June 11th, the bid day equals one year. So I think we gave it our best shot and, uh, they're telling us that we should wait.
Questions, comments?
Comment.
Stay. Maybe some thinking this by you.
Me too.
Turned around, thought you guys could be looking at chicken, then I would never think there was enough room between another guard rail point away where that, uh, color went down there to get a sidewalk in.
It would be a real challenge. It would be a real challenge. And Tim was on the call, was, since, like, he was very persuasive on the call initially. IDOT said the same thing, that there's no room. That's why I think we could do it. And, uh, I think he's persuaded him that it could be fun. It's just.
Again, I'd like to thank you for trying and advocating for this. Um, it's a shame that we can't get it, but thank you again for trying.
Thank you.
The big issue is based on the, uh, electricity that would be required.
Yes, as I said, maybe we will have, uh, I believe it's six poles that the village has requested as part of this project, uh, six actual light poles that will be responsible for. And one of those will be either in or very close to Hempak Park. And we'll be working with ComEd, uh, to make sure that we have enough power to that pole to, to support the light, or the sign. I did get the proposal that Jeannie had on the sign that Chamber was looking at. It was about $11,000. I was surprised it was that inexpensive, but I have not really looked at the specs of the sign yet. Uh, but we will be sharing the information with, with the ComEd and making sure that we can actually take, take spirit as what we're supposed to comment on that. So we'll make sure there is power to the park.
The signage we're talking about putting up with the village sign out of Chambers, something like that.
Well, that's what the board had said at the last meeting. The board wants to take control of that sign. Chamber was prepared to do it and was planning to do it. Um, but in this case, I explained to Jeannie that village board would like to have the sign. Jeannie did offer to maintain the sign for us to handle putting things on the sign. She also wanted to reiterate that, uh, she believes in her time there that anytime the village had a request, for example, census and those kind of things, that she's always made the village priority. And if the site gets the, if the, uh, board did choose to allow the chamber to manage the sign, they would continue to make us a priority. But, uh, she understands that the board at this point would like to put up our own sign on the south side of it. And that we will be putting that into the proposed 22 budget.
All right. As he furthered on that? What's the relations committee?
I really don't have anything. We had a meeting, uh, with IDOT on Monday. We talked about some initiatives and some of the protocols and that kind of thing, but nothing really to speak up. We have a, we have a draft copy of the brochure that we've been working on. Um, they did a nice job on that, except for they didn't include any of the maps that they charge us for. So they're redoing the, uh, project, move the maps. It's been interesting working with them, but then we're going to have to do some wordsmithing and that kind of thing. But, uh, then again, I think it's a, we, village just committed, got a copy of it and trustee Jackie. Got it. Um, I'm, I'm more than happy to share it with everybody, but I'd rather share a final, like something that's, that's more complete than where it's at. But if you guys want to see it, I can serve and share it.
Okay. Any questions? Planning and zoning.
Yeah, I have a brief update. Um, Mr. Hedges alluded to it earlier with the, uh, the Crown information. Um, so on Monday, February 22nd, there will be a Plan Commission meeting, a public hearing for that Plan Commission meeting. Um, about the Oakstead subdivision, uh, the Oakstead developments, excuse me. Um, the Z B A will also have a public hearing on the preliminary development plan on Tuesday, March 9th. Also on the agenda for Tuesday, March 9th, will be a public hearing for a text amendment for signs at, uh, the truck stop area, I-90 U S 20. And then finally, there will be a public hearing on that same date for a text amendment in order to combine the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals and I can't for the life of me remember the name of what the new commission will be called. So if, uh, somebody could help me out with that, that'd be awesome.
Planning and zoning commission.
Planning and zoning commission, that's right. Um, I knew it was something so easy that I forget. Um, and then finally, as Mr. Hedges mentioned earlier, on Thursday, March 18th, there will be a public hearing at the village board meeting for the proposed annexation agreement of the Oakstead development plan. And that is all I have.
What was the February date?
Uh, Monday, February 22nd was Planning Commission and that is the public hearing on the preliminary development plan.
And the time?
Uh, all of these times are, well, seven o'clock.
So that's, that's this coming Monday?
Yes.
So all of these other taxing bodies need to get feedback before it goes Monday?
They, they could, given the opportunity to attend that meeting, to, to remark at that meeting? So yes.
So when this week were they all notified? Was it like Monday that they got sent and we gave them one week before?
I've already received comments from Laura, so I already, I already.
Well, you get that, but there's also the fire department. There, there's a lot of tax bodies. I'm just wondering when we notified them because that's a week. Even if it was Monday, it's a week before it's going to planning. And this is a big development we've talked about for a while.
I, I'm, I mean, I.
One of the complaints that happened when, before I was on the board and when I was on another taxing bodies, that the village didn't work with the local taxing bodies when new developments came in, specifically Tuscany Woods and that large Crown development. This is feeling is almost like it was going towards that. I'm not saying you're not working with them. I'm just saying the timelines are very short because none of them are having board meetings between now and then for their work.
The park district is being, I believe on Monday, because Laura and I have already talked about.
The same night as our planning.
Yes, which is why she cannot attend, which is why she and I have already had one conversation and will continue to. I, I know what her requests are. I'll be sharing those with Crown. And I'll be encouraging them to meet together.
And it's a fire board meeting beforehand to?
Pardon me?
It's a fire department board meeting.
I don't know what a fire board meetings are, but I can tell you that Trevor and I've had several conversations about this. I've spoken one-on-one to each one of those people, including the library district and, and Jody at township. And I believe that all are very aware of this project. Uh, the, the village board has already received a preliminary presentation by Crown several months ago. So this is very much in the public eye right now. It's, it's very much a conversation among all the taxing districts. So I really, really disagree that that they're very well informed on this project and they've had every opportunity until now and they'll have another month to have input and comments.
And I do believe when Oak, when Oakstead was first brought, uh, attorney Schuster told Crown to contact those bodies at that time, several months ago. Did Crown? No, Crown did not. Crown has not contacted no one.
Yeah, that was November.
Okay. So since November come out, Crown never contacted anyone? No, and this is Crown's MO. And this is, you're figuring the village is going to roll over and let them do what they want? I can tell you're, you're upset about this. This isn't toward you. This is, this is in general, the stigma that has happened in previous developments. And so I'm just trying to, I mean, we're on a Thursday talking about a meeting that's happening Mon- Monday. They got notified this week. It sounds like Crown was supposed to talk to people for the last. They had December, January and a portion of February to contact all of them and they did nothing.
I prefer not to sit here and defend Crown, but I would like to explain the process. Um, we, we, only a week ago, about 10 days ago, the developers even received a development agreement. Well, this started out as an amendment to a development agreement with one-third of the project being replanted and the other two-thirds staying the same until future consideration. But they were asking for approval for the entire project upfront without any plat, without any information, any details. Um, I was not comfortable with that. Attorney Schuster did find a way to do it legally, but it was not something I was comfortable with. It was not something that really, uh, Dan Olson, who's the development director for Crown, was really comfortable with either. They agreed that they would go back and plant the entire project. That took them several months. So you now have before you, um, not maybe in the package tonight, but you have seen before. And I've now shared with all the other taxing districts to plat, which has now, well, excuse me, 1,012 lots versus the original 813 lots, so roughly 200 more lots for the same amount of, of paper. Um, so with that in mind, I believe that, um, that the extra time was taken. That's why it wasn't made in November because they didn't really have a plat to share with even us until about 10 days ago. And immediately I turned that around and shared with the other taxing bodies. Because in those ensuing six months, um, there are big conversations. As you know, I meet regularly with those taxing bodies and so they're having conversations, not just as a group, but you know, I don't think the week goes by that I don't talk to every one of them. And they ask questions about this.
Yep.
Uh, I can tell you the three different sites that Trevor's considered for his new fire station and where he is now. And this was one of them at one time. And I believe you all know that we worked with this, with the school district, uh, and put the school district and Crown together. And the library district was offered a site within the same subdivision. So I believe that the staff members of those organizations are all intimately aware of this project and the facts of the project. I think it's their responsibility to share that with their board members, not ours, yours and not mine, just my personal.
Yeah.
But I do think that we've been very thorough in, in keeping them informed along the way.
Is there a, a breakdown, break ground date or construction date that is driving the March approval for this?
What's primarily driving the March approval is the school district needs to get in the ground right away because they need to be open in the fall to, um, the school.
Okay.
And also each time that Crown has postponed, it's because, because of their engineering work that has to be done. And by the way, E E I has a submitted amount of preliminary site plan. They issued preliminary comments, so I would say that's moving along as well. Um, I'm sorry, I forgot your question.
No, I just asked if there was, and you answered. There was like a forcing function of why this was moving into March and he says, because the school needs to break.
Each time it has been a delay, I've been checking with the chief operating officer at the school to make sure she's okay with the delay. And each time she said yes. So
Okay.
I think the real objective here is for them to be able to break around in the spring. So they still have a few more months to do that.
Gotcha.
You shared this plan with the other taxing bodies. Is this something you can share with us as well?
Sure. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Anything else on planning and zoning?
Uh, no, I'm just glad that, uh, planning and zoning can be such a lively conversation lately. No, no, no other information from me.
Yeah. Can I ask a quick question? We're talking about combining, maybe this was brought up in the last meeting and I missed it. We're talking about combining, uh, Z B A and Planning Commission into one uh, body, which I, um, for that because it adds efficiency, but who gets to get out? Do we just reassess everybody then? Does everybody kind of get pulled off the boards and then we pick, uh, six new members or, uh, well, I'm just curious to plan on that, not that.
I think we talked about this last time and I think, um, the village president will have, make the appointments uh, uh, when, once a new commission is, has been formed, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But, uh, but yeah, anybody that, uh, has not indicated they're going to retire or, and we have three, the three vacant seats already. We were probably only going to look at having to eliminate two positions at the most, but everybody will have to go through that process of uh, going through the review and sending out an application. And we'll look at new people too, if they want to join, but
Sure.
This has been a large dearth of people signing up since we have three vacancies and have for a while. Thank you. Any else? Volunteers. Everybody say. Amen. Feel the trail. You're muted.
Snowing.
Oh dude, my joke, I missed it. Uh, no, no report. We have a trail, so.
Is it plowed? Is it plowed?
Has it been plowed?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Are you, I think, right?
No, but I'll take some of your 8,000 bucks.
You can have it all, baby. You can have it all.
Village Services. What we're doing to that better.
All right. So Village Services Committee, I'm going to be reaching out to you, uh, tomorrow to find a date next week for us to meet. Flood Brothers has now, has reached out again to find out if we're going to bid for our services, uh, for trash collection. Um, and so we need to figure out as a village services committee, if we're going to recommend a contract renewal, just a straight renewal and negotiation with the waste management or if we want to officially go out to bid and make a recommendation to the board so that we can start notifying the other companies that want to, uh, be a part of the process, depending on what the committee decides and the board. That's the next step in the process. Any questions? Jay, does that hurt? Sorry. Village administrator, does that, um, sound like the appropriate way?
Yes, and I, I forwarded the information from volunteer this week, so you should have those numbers.
Yeah.
And we have been in contact with, um.
They spent a little bit of money down at Palm Beach.
No, it was all serving for renewals. And since the administrator there has contacted us and we've been sharing information back and forth.
Oh, nice. Do they use Waste Management, or?
Yeah, they're up for a similar renewal just like ours.
Okay.
So we've been sharing some numbers with them also.
Flood is not Arango, right? It's not gonna be-
No.
Sorry, they're different companies.
They are.
Alright. Uh, that's, any questions for me? That's it. Everybody got their trash picked up this week, I think? No. Are they contacting you all? Because I saw a Facebook post last week that, that there had been things missed, but I never got notified that there was any issue.
I called Alicia, and somebody else called me back, and they said, okay, they, they missed, they're gonna go back Friday, but they don't give me any feedback anymore.
Is that, does that throw to you at all, or? You threw it, I didn't, I didn't take it, because they always used to go to either Linda and then for a while we said copy both of us so that we can notify the residents, and then I didn't hear anything, so I wasn't sure.
And then today, they, today they had something out, and like, they didn't pick up trash until like, almost like five thirty.
Gotcha.
So, and, and so we found out because a resident complained, right? And then, you know, again, to our ordinance, right, it's a six o'clock, so we don't like freak out till they don't show up until like, six o'clock.
Gotcha.
So-
I'll reach out to volunteer to get that fixed.
It'd be really cool if they just send-
Well, the truck broke down.
So what happens when the truck breaks down? Alicia is the route manager, the driver calls Alicia and lets her know what's going on, and then she's supposed to notify us that, hey, we have a truck issue, we'll get to that neighborhood when we can, so that we can then just proactively, that was the agreement we came to. We can then proactively communicate on social that, hey, their Waste Management has notified us, or called on, your trash will be picked up if it doesn't get picked up tonight. That way, it avoids phone calls coming into the office. And that happens, so I will reach out and copy you on that as well as you.
And then further, that's all I've got to say about that.
Public work. We're running really low on salt. The call's been placed several weeks ago, but February fourth, uh, the state is supplying the IDOT, state of Illinois, the salt right now, so everybody else is on hold. But eleven straight days of plowing. They've had a few hydraulic issues, they've, they've repaired them and kept going. And, uh, thank Jay, today he recognized all the drivers for their years or time spent, even though the, the public thinks that, you know, well, they're getting paid for it. But a lot of people don't understand the day before a snowstorm, you don't sleep well, because you're worried about your route, you know, and unless you do it, you don't know. So, but they're holding, they're holding everything together. Need a rubber tire in loader, they got a loner when the backhoe broke again. And, uh, they shaved off a day and a half of time by using the rubber tire in loader moving piles, you know, down by the tracks and whatnot. So, considerable savings, just because they got a loner while theirs was getting fixed. And then the other thing is, I sent you, uh, today, um, Clark Mosquito is going to hold our price, uh, with no increase this year, this coming year. So I sent that to you late this afternoon, probably haven't seen it.
I had, actually they're proposing a three-year agreement.
Right.
Same price. Actually, the same price as the first year, and has, uh, plus a living and two more years.
That's positive about being so old, because I haven't seen the same one since you.
Oh, that's all. That's all? Fantastic work. I heard you very much today too, good job.
Yes.
You gonna have to take home? Did you bring home anything?
No.
I didn't go on anything. Alright. BDC?
BDC had our meeting last Wednesday, um, and it was fantastic. We spent, um, during the previous Business Development Commission, we had tasked the team with reviewing the two thousand four comp, um, comprehensive plan, um, for land use. It's a, it's an area that we'd like to, uh, do some, um, thinking on, as our group is at least under the impression, um, that, uh, you know, with the coming of, um, the Oakstead, uh, development, um, this spring, uh, summer and fall, as well as the continued advancement of, uh, I always forget the name of it, the one off of Allen to the north. Yeah, so, um, so we're just kind of trying to get out ahead of the developers, who are eventually, we think are gonna be coming here soon. And what we'd like to do is, uh, we've made it a project to, um, just construct some ideas and thoughts that we have that we could share with you guys, um, as, uh, or the village board, um, you know, of things that we think would make sense as far as, uh, land use development. So we had a really good, robust conversation about that, everyone came prepared, which I was really proud of. So we did that, we also, uh, Jeannie Mayer and Karen Traska, um, had several conversations. Both of them weren't available to attend the meeting on Wednesday due to family conflicts, but, um, they've already begun, uh, the construction of our ambassador program. We're hoping to eventually roll out and present to you guys, um, as a, uh, program where we connect as a village with the, you know, leadership within our business community, getting their input, and, uh, feedback on how, uh, you know, interactions with the develop, uh, the village, um, are going in terms of permitting and things of that nature, things that they would like to see, um, things like that. So we're excited about that, and, uh, Elaine Thomas has begun, uh, the beginnings of a new program that we're hoping to launch this year, um, uh, around the topic of entrepreneurship and trying to coach and, uh, and, uh, offer, um, resources and, um, be an aid to our local residents who are interested in starting up a business. Um, we think that's pretty critical. We talked about, uh, resources at the high school that we have, as well as resources over at Elgin Community College. So, uh, we're very excited about that as well, um, and and then, uh, the main, we, we're still working, oh, and then beautification, um, we don't have anything solid to report, but, uh, we really have a target of trying to get a couple more of the buildings along, um, State Street, uh, that are in the key downtown area, uh, to put in facade application, um, uh, for work, uh, we'd really like to see that work, and obviously we're gonna need your guys' help for that. But we'd really like to have, uh, some significant, you know, some more side, uh, facade work done prior to the Labor Day opening of the street scape, um, so that, uh, we don't have any, you know, sort of blots on, uh, what we hope to present as, uh, um, you know, Hampshire, Hampshire's, uh, Main Street two point O, so to speak. So, um, so yeah, so we've actually had some positive conversations, I want to thank Jay for that. He's done a, a good job of, uh, helping us corral some of those business owners and building and property owners. But, uh, but yeah, that's, you know, that's what we're doing.
Hey Ryan, what's going on with the hair salon across the street?
They're scheduled to open in July, I believe. Jay, do you have a, um-
July of, of this year?
I, I believe that's what it is. They still have, they've done all the outside work, but there's a considerable amount of inside work that still needs to be done. At least that was, Bill Swalwell is the, uh, is the, um, you know, person on our team that, uh, does most of the communication with the facade, uh, program people. And I think it was either June or July, I thought. We've got her slated to go into Hampshire's very own, in fact, I can check that here, because we coincided it with the date. Now she's gonna be open by then, I think that's in August. But yeah, I think it's June or July, Toby.
They have completed the, the facade improvement program, and that program is-
Yeah, I just was wondering, you know, you don't see anybody there or anything.
That's a good looking building.
Yeah, she did a fantastic job, we're, we're really happy. I mean, that's, uh, another, I think, uh, thing that we as a group can be proud of, that, that's a really nice looking building. But that's it, uh, Mr. President.
You ready?
Not yet.
Do you want to go for finance?
Yes, you have reimbursement for two hundred and ninety-five dollars for Mr. Projecty to be paid on before February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Any questions?
Can we do a payment plan of like, ten bucks a month?
Hey, they can't say no, can they?
Yes, we can.
Aw, man.
Should've got prior approval.
AI.
Payment to Ryan Projecty, the amount of two hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I so moved.
Sorry. Any questions or comments? Pro call, put it.
This time, I, Mr. Coach.
Hi.
Thank you, Toby, eh?
I was gonna vote, no.
Abstain or whatever, present, whatever I'm supposed to do.
Whatever. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, alright.
Alright.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you all, thank you, thank you.
And our regular accounts payable, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and seventy-eight cents to be paid on before February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Any questions? What?
Yes. Page three, under EEI.
Yes.
The twelve thousand nine thirty for water maintenance.
Sanitary?
It's related to the, um, engineering services agreement that you guys signed for the, um, improvements that are being done, um, with the IDOT project at seventy-two State Street, that's a little area.
Outside of IDOTs.
Yes, this is, this is engineering for the-
Our stuff.
Yes, our stuff.
Our sanitary line that runs under there?
Any other questions?
I will entertain a motion to approve accounts payable in amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Double.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Pro call.
Mr. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Projecty.
Hi.
Mr. Coach.
Hi.
Mr. Klein. Hi. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Any progress, man?
Nope.
Uh, can I, do we have the schedule for budget yet? Did you send it, Christine, and I just missed it?
You'll have it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, cool, thank you.
Check, we'll pick it up next week. Any questions for finance? Any new business or other announcements?
I have a question, I don't know if it's new business or not, and it relates back to Ryan, what you were saying, or trustee Projecty, what you were saying about beautification. Is there an ordinance or anything around businesses downtown or, or will not rent or sell businesses, but just leave vacant properties? Is that what we can do with the solo?
Do, do you want me to take that, Jay, or do you want to take it?
I don't know, it's just a real estate thing, I'm just, it's an open question, I just, I think we're gonna do a ton of great stuff for the street program, you're working hard on the beautification stuff, and then we have business, or building owners that refuse to have businesses.
Are you speaking about particular businesses?
Well, the one in particular is the old Palazzo's, that next door to it, still hasn't been rented for a long time, and there are issues with that building. So, I'm just curious that we're gonna do a ton of great work to figure out, we have stuff that's green.
So, I'll, I'll take a shot at it first, trustee Projecty. We've been working with all of those property owners now for about four months, yeah, and, uh, they both indicated, first of all, they were sent a warning that they would be cited for property maintenance codes. To answer your question, the reason I paused is because you asked about occupancy, not maintenance. So no, I don't think there's anything the village can do to force somebody to sell or rent their property, but we do have a bill of maintenance.
Perfect, but they have to upkeep it.
Yes, so we, rather than send them a citation initially, say build our new building properly, they go out and write the violations, and summarize the violations in main letters, just to, actually all three businesses, uh, Rose Garden, uh, Palazzo's and Dallas. And so I chose to pick the two that are local first, and I sent them both a mail saying, here's a letter, you will be cited if you don't do this. Both of them responded immediately that they were willing to, to both meet and do the work required, when weather permitting. Um, then we arranged for Dave, um, I'm sorry, for Bill Swalwell to make the appointment. Both of them have now indicated that they plan to put in applications for the facade improvement program. I took one tenant, prospective tenant, uh, Palazzo's myself, um, I know that there is a, a Realtor in town that has a couple of prospects for them also, that could try and aid them.
I'll give you one guess who it is.
She might be in the room. So I, I would just say that after many, many years of neglect, that they're both engaged right now with the village to, to, to do exactly that. Palazzo's, I think it would be, like, a year, it's twenty-four hundred square foot, there is equipment in there for a restaurant, we'll take probably twenty or thirty thousand dollars and build up inside the building, uh, for the new tenant. But Patrick has been engaged, like, twice over there now, uh, with the, with the same tenant, who wants to put a restaurant in there. Um, and I, my guess is that's why he's not responding to Realtor in the room, who's been trying to pitch somebody else for the site. The Dollar Store's a little bit more of a challenge, it's, you know, it's broken up into three different spaces, there's only really two entrances to the thing. Uh, they talked about adding a third entrance, uh, but I, I think they're gonna really struggle to find somebody for that space. We will all struggle to find somebody for that space.
There's only one bathroom in the town.
Um, I actually mentioned at the PDC meeting just recently, but I haven't said this to the property owners, but PDC's been talking about an incubator somewhere where we could take these, uh, Ryan, what was the number, fourteen hundred businesses in town, is that what Elaine?
Yeah, David found, um, I, I don't remember where he found that, but, uh, he had found that, uh, we had, I think it was, yeah, it was definitely north of a thousand, um, people, whatever businesses that are operating out of people's homes.
I'd see that they service the, yeah, fourteen hundred businesses in Hampshire, which means people like yourself, so I'll say that.
Good thoughts, by the way.
Yeah, I haven't had any yet. Anyway, um, I mentioned that, that that would be an interesting location for that, because it could break down into centralized services and that sort of thing. So, I, um, I think they would engage any kind of use for that building or sale of the building, but, uh, yeah, it's gonna be a challenge, because that is, needs a lot of work.
Do we, do we have anything in the policy about approving beautification grant programs for buildings that don't have a business in it? Like, I get the hair salon, because that's her business, she's starting it, Copper Barrel, they were bringing a business.
No, and I brought that up, because she could turn around right now and sell that building. She don't even have to occupy it.
Which, which I actually counter argued, that, that, I don't see why that's a problem personally. If she turns around and sells it, uh, our goal is to beautify the, uh, the street scape. By investing into those properties, we increase the likelihood that they get rented. To, to, I, to ar, to arbitrarily force them to wait until they have an occupant, I don't know that that actually furthers our goals personally, but-
You're right, trustee Projecty, you're actually right.
Whoa, hey, four years, that took, four years.
He said it like three times.
Can I still run again, I'll come back now? Toby agreed with me. I missed it.
Alright, any other, uh, new business or other announcements?
I just wanna, uh, thank, uh, our, our village manager, he's doing a hell of a job. Yeah. He's got, he's, he's got things going, and the, the, the morale is high, and, and, uh, he's doing a great job.
Yeah, I agree. Any else? Also Josh is doing great too.
Oh, and Laurie's?
Chief? Bro was back there?
Steve, you've been quiet today.
Jay is definitely-
Not much for him.
He doesn't want to say it, no one then-
Yes, I, I didn't mean to, I will admit. He's doing a hell of a job.
Yeah, because, uh, Jay's, uh, Josh has to do all the grunt work.
And he doesn't.
And Jay looks like the star of the work.
Yeah, Josh doesn't let. And we have a lot of balls in the air, and I think I'm gonna drop one, I just pump it his way, yeah.
Alright, any, uh, do you have something?
I can't remember it.
I wanted to let the board know about this, because we talked about it in the PR, and I think it, it wasn't something to be a part of the report. We brought up, we talked about social media stuff with, and we brought up the idea of potentially looking for, or having Jay consider looking for an intern or a college student that would do like a marketing internship for the village that could really look at the social media plan and doing advertising, PR, stuff like that. So, I don't know if that's something you want to think about for next year's budget. I don't know that it's something you necessarily have to pay for if they're doing it for credit, or if it's somebody that, Josh-
But don't most interns get paid something?
You do have to pay them.
Yes, they do.
I don't know what the laws are in Alabama.
Well, I will tell you that the business class at the high school, I, I don't know which class, but it's called, um, but the-
Well, I will tell you that the business class at the high school, I, I don't know which class, but it's called, um, but they just worked with several businesses in town, including mine, and they had um, groups of students that analyzed like my social media, my website and everything and critiqued it and came back and said, here's what you need to do.
Who's the teacher over there that did that with Lee?
He's six foot seven, really nice guy. He's a great teacher.
Six foot seven?
He's really tall.
But even something like being at a project.
Cause I love him to care our social.
It'd be great to, uh, contact that teacher and see if they would take something out like that as a, as a, uh, a project, but also uh, the, the winning team would get something.
Right.
Free chicken and chicken dip or something.
Well, no, it's, you, like a competition, a class competition. They all come up with proposals and then the board say what proposal they like and that team wins.
Eric Samuelson.
Oh, okay, yeah.
He's a great teacher.
Just to break it up, because I know you're looking at budgeting and planning and we talked about it.
How do you know? Cause they, they tore yours apart, you said?
They didn't tear it apart, but they critiqued.
No, that's what I'm looking.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what the PR committee's.
They did, and they came, actually came back with really good ideas.
Oh man, we needed it.
If you know, I don't, I can't speak to like Hampshire, but I, I know if you reach out to the school, they will be more than happy to do something like that with the community. They love that stuff.
I'll reach out to them, see if we can't get on their knuckle for that.
Yeah.
Because we're just, we're just, we're just looking to find our way, right? Like, so we came out of the gate, we were hot and now we're more reactive and proactive than.
The best people to look at are digital. My, I agree, are teenagers.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Oh, he's right though. And, and trust me, Kelly, especially in today's world, because these kids have been on the computer now for about a year doing school. They're technology professionals, basically.
Yep, agreed. Yeah.
I think they use the fifth graders to do it.
That's their number one comment to me was I need to be on TikTok. And I'm like, oh, God.
But you know what? They're not wrong.
I know they're not wrong. They're absolutely right.
All right, any else?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have, I have not heard a good thing.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Have a good night.